Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town and Row Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting for September 21, 2023. It is 7:01 PM. I am Mike O'Reilly, the chairman. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one commission under God, individual, liberty, justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. Next will be the roll call, starting on my right.
Dominic Smiraglino, alternate commissioner.
Dominic Venetia, alternate.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Leanne Brosie, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Dylan Woollett, planning and zoning administrator.
Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Thank you, and we do have seat alternates tonight.
Of our Nicole and then Dominic.
Dominic Smiraglino and Nicole, these two commission members. All right, moving along, we have general public participation. If anyone in the audience has any items they'd like to bring before the committee, please raise your hands now. Yes, come on up.
My name is Derek Talbot, 202F Wingate Circle Monroe. I'm here representing my father Edward, who lives at 257 Spring Hill Road.
This is the Spring Hill project. Does this have to do with the item before us tonight?
A ruling that your commission made regarding 255 Monroe Turnpike. That's at the very end of Spring Hill Road. I'm a little confused by the rulings that were made. Your meetings of August 3rd say that the applicant was withdrawing the application for 255 Monroe Turnpike due to the site not being at least one acre as required. And then your August 24th minutes say that that was approved. I'm confused.
Okay, well.
Straighten me out.
Our regulations state that in order for them to build what they wanted to build in that area, they had to have one acre parcel size.
Say that again.
One acre parcel size.
Right.
Not one acre. No, not one acre parcel, one acre zone.
Yeah, so, well, the first thing, though, is they had multiple applications in front of us. One was because they believed that at first that they needed it to be a one acre parcel, and they were under that. So they were coming to us saying, hey, can we build under? Which we were leaning towards a no on, obviously. But then they also had, I believe, two other applications on that property for other things, just different, you know, so what got approved wasn't that original application that got withdrawn. They withdrew it because they talked to attorneys, and the town attorney looked at it, and due to basically an error in our zoning regs, it allowed for it to be built on a one acre zone, not a one acre parcel. So they realized they didn't have to put that application in front of us, so they withdrew that. What was approved was the following application, allowing them to build within that regulation, and maybe I want to say one other application, but all with the same address. Does that make sense, sort of?
Well, clear me up, then. Was that Starbucks application approved?
Yes.
And why is it approved if it's less than one acre?
So because of the zoning, the way those zoning regulations were worded, it's still are, or did we vote on that last time?
Still are.
Or still are. It's one acre for the zone, and legally zones go out to the road. They consider half the road counts as the zone.
That's kind of weasely.
It is, but we're actually now going back. And unfortunately, the nature of planning and zoning is our job is to look at the regulations and determine if the applicant fits the regulations. We did that and then realized that the regulations had errors. So now we're moving forward to try to fix that, so something, as you said, weasely doesn't happen again. You know, there was a little bit of loophole.
The Spring Hill Road suffers because of that application.
But unfortunately.
I object to the approval of that.
I get that, yeah, but unfortunately.
Say that again. I object to that, and the fault is your commission's fault.
Yeah, nope, definitely from the, yeah, the way the regulations were written, we had to go back and fix that, so, you know.
The difference between parcel.
Please wait your turn and then you start.
So the parcel would be the property owned by the individual. Zone goes out to the, it's a zone boundary, which could be multiple parcels, it could be one parcel. But the way it looks is it's one parcel, but then goes a little beyond that out to the middle of the road. So basically, if you look at a zoning map, the roads aren't eliminated from that zoning map. They're included within the zones, and that's kind of a zoning law.
So the next result is Spring Hill Road's getting dumped on again. Do you agree on that?
That's the result. The result is that a Starbucks is being built at the end of Spring Hill Road.
Spring Hill Road is being dumped on again. That's my takeaway from that.
Your opinion, Scott.
Yes, my opinion, but a lot of things that have been done to that road, both by Monroe and Trumbull, my interpretation is it's been dumped on. You can spell that in capital letters, U N P E D O N. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Clarify. Want to add anything? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karen French. I live on Blueberry Hill, which is off of Spring Hill. My concern initially was the 260 address of Monroe, knowing that Spring Hill was, is slash residential.
So, sorry, this will actually be for our upcoming application. We're going, which is about to happen. We just have to read it in the record, and then there's the public part for you to come up. So do you mind just waiting, like, five minutes?
Okay.
Sorry, it's just like the way the legal structure works. It's kind of annoying.
Yes, come up, please. Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is George Wally, and I'd like to have a community event down at 1545 Monroe Turnpike. Broadway.
Sounds great.
We have a haunted house, some food trucks, the usual.
Tell us a little bit more about when are the dates and.
Okay, the opening day would be October 6th, it's a Friday. The gates would open at 6:00, the haunted house would start at 7:00. That would go until 10:00. I think I filled it until 11:00, because anybody that's in line at 10:00, they'd stop the people, but they'd still be allowed to go through, so we give ourselves an extra hour. We're gonna have beverages, we'll have a couple food trucks. I think we have a terror guard reader now. I think we have the crystal, vendors on crystals, mystical crystals. And keep an eye on, you know, how to go along. But we've got food trucks, we're gonna eat hot chocolate, coffee, donuts, spring stuff.
Fall stuff. What day, Louis?
So it would be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, August 6th, 7th, right down to, I think, October 6th, 7th. And then every weekend till, I believe, October 29th is the last weekend.
And Sunday it'll go to 11:00 also?
Yeah, but I'm gonna keep an eye, see how the noise votes.
And I guess, like the previous ones, Dylan's contact information would be, where somebody will have contact with the, or not Dylan, sorry. I remember Rick had done it, but that was one day event. We don't need you there every day. There'll be a direct contact that the police will have, so if they get a noise complaint, they can lower volume. Is it indoors?
No.
No, it's all outdoors, probably.
All right, so this is in the process of being approved administratively, so we don't have to rule on it. I just want you to come up and let the rest of the commissioners know what's going on, if anybody has any questions.
I think it's great. Should be fun. Kids will love it.
This is a pretty, the guy who's doing it is very interesting. You start seeing pictures of it. He did a nice job, so.
Can you buy tickets ahead of time or at the door?
You could. You gotta go to fearworld.com.
Okay.
But you want to come down, come down after Saturday, because I think.
Are you making out of getting a sign off on the different departments?
For this or for the event? I think I'm okay.
I guess, like, police have said it's okay, fire, or health department hasn't.
All the departments have reviewed it. The building permits have been applied for. Our building official was on vacation this week. There's just some small, I guess, discussions to have among staff just to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But it does look like we're heading toward a everyone signing off on it.
I do know EMS had a little concern about the walking across the parking lot when it gets dark from like where they might park to the event. Are you gonna have some sort of cones or something, maybe?
There's gonna be blocks, so people can get right into where the event is.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else from the public here tonight like to address the commission on any issues not on the agenda? Is there anyone online that would like to address the commissions on any issues not on the agenda? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Tonight we have the first public hearing, EFP 2023-03. This is an excavation and fill permit.
Do we want to announce that RAA is withdrawn?
Well, yes, if anyone is here for the next item on the agenda, the text amendments, those are going to be withdrawn, so we will not be discussing them tonight. We have still more work to do on them before we bring them to a public hearing. So for choosing Spring Hill Road. You have the announcement?
Yep. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held September 21st, 2023. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, December 21st at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be a hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees upon the Town Hall. EFP 2023-03 File 113. 60 Spring Hill Road, excavation and filling permit, application for proposed site preparation for future building, driveway and parking area at 260 Spring Hill Road, Cessar Map 006, Lot 006. Eldorado Holdings LLC, owner Rose Tizzo and Company LLC representative. Notice was published in Connecticut Post twice, Friday, September 8th and September 15th.
Exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I do have exhibits 1 through 5 dated September 13th, 2023.
And for the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Rose from Rose Tizzo and Company. I live by Brompton Avenue in Fairfield, Connecticut, representing Eldorado. Dylan, can you switch that to key?
Password is local user. It's a good password.
We were here before you and withdrew our application associated with the excavation filling permit in order for us to make our new application more in conformance with the Indian level approval that we approved. So we didn't want you to have to prove something that wasn't almost correct. So. So what you have before you here is the subdivision that is Cyber Park. This is Technology Drive, Route 111, bottom of the sheet. Spring Hill Road is on top of the. This piece right here, we'll try, is what goes out to Spring Hill Road. And a little fugue as to people as to what's going on with this piece. Like, that's a 260 Spring Hill Road address because of this piece, which is connected to this larger piece, which is off of Technology Drive. Any development of this piece would come off Technology Drive. This piece right here and around it is pretty much all the wetlands. So it's not something that we're gonna be able to, anybody's gonna triangle over it to get to Spring Hill Road. Much similar to get to Technology Drive, 111. So what we have proposed for our project is this lot number three, Cyber Park, proposing excavation and filling of the 5.44 acre piece. For this typography, these funds from approximately 390 up to 460, the high point. We're proposing is excavation and filling to level the plateau for a future building. Lightway, not finding that into a pad site, and that's impossible. This is just a watershed map that shows our parcel and everything is drained down into this stream along Springfield Road, or a little sliver of it that comes down past 100 Technology Drive and then back in, actually gets to the same place, close to Rancho LaClara. This is our drawing associated with the excavation filling. What we're proposing is access to our site here. It's called anti-tracking map, and then we're excavating this portion of the site. And then fill up the portion down here to create our pad. Previously, we had a much greater excavation proposed. It was in the neighborhood of 60,000 cubic yards. Right now, we're looking at the excavation being 46,000 cubic yards, approximately 12,000 to 13,000 cubic yards of fill. So we have a net total of the site of about 36,000 cubic yards. We have been in contact with our engineer, actually talking to him today. I believe that a letter was issued by James to Dylan associated with his approval of the applications that we made. Add some notes associated with swales, controls, and also talked about how our trucking is gonna go, which is gonna go down Technology Drive to Route 111, and then south out of all of the other parts. I was not going through any codes of. I'm aware of that. This is just a, very, 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 very excavations. We are making a place on site. Typical soil erosion. Putting soil with control all this on the site. Added construction fence all along this location here. That was added in discussion with the town engineer. We've got a stockpile for topsoil in this location. We have a swale along this edge to catch the water that can come off on the excavated area, and it is treated. It's all separated, and then they start to go pot, and eventually it goes into the pipe that goes through disheasm to the retention basin that exists currently. That retention basin was sized for all three properties to be developed. It's a mission, so. For the town engineer's request, we have done sections, several sections, through the site. You know what's going on. Same information that's shown on the color map, but exaggerated scale of products. And the flow. This is the planting plan that was agreed upon at Wetlands for the restoration of the upper view area, which is in this location and in this location, and that vibrant vegetation of the source. Got that all agreed upon at Wetland, that's why I made it. It's not something I submitted, but. We will be doing some crushing on site because we need to fill a large portion of the site. So we need to create that material on site. We have that, we will need some crushing. We made a lot less trucks if we do crushing than if you're gonna be bringing out rocks. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You have, the other two buildings are very attractive buildings, very well kept, fits into the landscape nicely. Do you plan on moving right ahead with a similar building on the site?
It hasn't been decided as to what it is going to be, specifically as multiple inquiries about the site. One of the reasons to do this work is to make it more understandable to a possible tenant or landlord for that site. It's far than I envisioned it, the way it's conditioned currently. But I believe that we'll be back to you in some short order with a file.
All right, well, let's see if the commissioners have any questions. Start on my right.
Yeah, the last time you talked about this, you took some cores. You were sure on how much lead you were gonna encounter, how much blasting.
Correct, and what we found on Route 100 Technology Drive, we had going, we had a blast portion for the parking lot in the back, and that rock was home. So there is rock that shows up above about eight to 10 feet below surface. It's unknown that it's gonna be the same consistency, that it's gonna be soft enough that it could be ripped. So we're unsure how much plastic is going to be required.
You haven't done any other further investigations since the last time?
No.
Is it possible to take more cores to figure out?
We know where the rock is, but you're not gonna know what that consistency of that rock is until you're, whether it can be ripped apart.
Thank you.
The filling area, is that low land, marshland, or is it just regular?
No, the wetlands are back here, way back here. We stay 20 feet away from the wetlands, but any of our filling, it is lower than the rest of the site, but it is not wet.
Thanks.
Can you have the planting map? And then is the way you can kind of zoom it up on that corner that kind of goes to Spring Hill?
Yeah.
So now is that like a stream or a brook that goes across there? So is any, is that all, a whole area wetlands, or just kind of?
For the most part, it is.
Okay, so even if you wanted to, there's no on this property putting a road out to Spring Hill Road?
Or come down to this. Yeah, there's no.
Okay, so no traffic would be dumping out on the Spring Hill Road? That's all I got, thank you.
When we discussed this, we're doing the subcommittee. I was understanding you weren't gonna have a question.
In talking with contractors that they have been interviewing to do the project, it's gonna be significant cost savings and number of trucks having to go out of the site by doing some, it may not require as much crushing as we believe, but it's hard to tell that until you get there.
All right, so you have a timeframe, when you're gonna run the crusher, if you're not gonna run the crusher.
I believe that Dylan sets that forth in his.
Where's that at, some of the approval?
Our anticipation is that.
10 to 3.
It says 10 to 3, Leon.
10 to 3?
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
We already have an approval?
Yes.
So we're. What's blasting, is that out there too?
It says blasting slash crushing activities, limited to 10 to 3.
10 to 3?
Monday to Friday.
Saturdays, no Sundays, well, no Sundays, anyway.
No weekends, no holidays.
I didn't know we had an approval already set up for it. How much, how long, it's time frame?
Time frame?
Time frame, yeah.
Eight to nine months.
Eight to nine months. What's this approval for, how long? How long is the approval?
Three years.
I just have it, like I said before, when you first came in front of us, you said you weren't gonna use a crusher, you were gonna remove everything. Concerned about the crusher. I wanted to turn it to. How long is the operation? As it's, because people, you know what I mean? Especially when you're moving rock, and you're selling the rock, and you're doing this and doing that. We're having a lot of issues with that going on. A lot of issues with the blasting, and we have a lot of issues with the crushing. And so I was all for it if you were gonna remove the rock, but then all of a sudden, a crusher shows up.
But it's something that's needed in order to be able to reduce the number of trucks and make things economically viable.
No, I understand, I understand that. But when you first brought this in front of us in the subcommittee, you said you weren't gonna have a crusher there, and.
The education of talking to the people.
That's all I have for you. There's no repo.
So I had the same question Leon had about now there's a crusher. Will you still be using the materials on site? Or are you gonna be taking all the rock off site?
No, we'll be using that material on site as our fill material.
Okay, so they'll crush it, and then you'll use it on site and not trucking it?
And some of it is going to go off.
Some will go off.
Yes. 36,000 goes off.
Oh, yeah, well, you're only taking 45,000 out. So you're gonna export 36,000 of it, right? You're taking a lot of material off the property, so you're gonna, you're going to.
Taking three times as much off.
Right, so it's not all going to be used on there, most of it's gone off. Now, you don't know how much rock, like, you don't have any idea.
There is rock on the site, we know that.
So.
Eight to 10 feet down. Don't envision on that rock, whether it, whether it's rock that's found right next to 100 Technology. Rip to it now, blasting.
All right, thanks. So you did not need to do any blasting down in 100?
No.
Okay. All right, so.
Nope, I'm good.
I have one more question. So the stuff you're taking out, is that gonna be crushed before you take it out?
That wouldn't be, what we would anticipate, is less trucks leaving the site then.
So basically, it's processing area for them to sell the rock?
Well, the rock, as I understand it, the rock has a home already. They're looking at a place to, people who are doing this work are saying, I'm gonna do it, 'cause I have a place to put the rock.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
The property owner also owns the other two buildings, or is that? Okay, so, you know, the tenants aren't gonna stay long. All of a sudden, they're next to a rock crushing quarry. So I think that's probably a good sign that a building. quarry, so I think that's probably a, a good sign that a building is going to be forthcoming. That's all for me, thanks.
All right. Let's go to the public. Is anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Yes ma'am, come on forward, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Frenchette, Blueberry Lane, which is off Spring Hill Road. My father built the house in 1957, and back then, back 57, everything was farmland. And as kids, we used to play on Spring Hill Road, and we used to go down the street and underneath the culver. And the culver is more to the right in the picture, and all the way up and down Spring Hill Road. I know he explained to me that it is wetlands, and it won't be going through, but that's now, and that's today, that they're sending that. And the fact that Trumbull has put all kinds of, what do we got here? The Monroe, so far, Spring Hill Road on Monroe side has remained residential, albeit the kennel. Now we have bomb braces, which are totally very close. Since Spring Hill Road shares itself with the town of Trumbull, they have added the Amazon Distribution Center, the transfer station, bus company, two self-storage building, Jehovah Witnesses Church, and multiple small businesses continuing along Trefoyle Drive. And I, like Derek, feel like our homes were getting squeezed out by both ends of this street. I was born here, I was always under the assumption that Spring Hill Road was a residential property, growing up. Now I know it's Trumbull and Monroe, but I don't understand that triangle, how it can have a Monroe address off Spring Hill Road, yet everything is happening in Trumbull. This is all Trumbull. Quest has a Trumbull address, the veterinarian has a Trumbull address. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how that triangle got there.
That is part of Monroe, that's the way the. Yes, the way it's divided. The town line runs.
Everything that's green is Monroe. It's like the line is right there, so you're right, Quest and everything is.
Is in Trumbull.
Is in Trumbull, but this side that's undeveloped is Monroe.
The Vet, is, Trumbull has an address, the veterinarian.
Yes, that's right down, so it's just this kind of weird, empty patch of, of green. If you were to drive down that corporate drive to the right, there's nothing there. If you were to keep driving straight, you get that little corner we're talking about, which goes out to Spring Hill Road. It's weird, the number, the address number's strange, but it's, you're right, but it's because it's right on the border and.
And what's, I mean, I know they're talking about blasting and crushing, or doing whatever, but since that is all wetlands there, isn't that going to disturb?
So, the Wetlands Commission would look at that, they would have taken that into account.
Because like I said, that is part of the aquatic, you know, it's a region of the aquatic, and I don't think anything should have gone on Spring Hill Road right now.
Thank you for your comments. And we have another gentleman, come on up forward. Just give your name and address for the record, once again.
My name is Derek Talbott. First name is spelled D-E-R-R-I-C-K. It's been misspelled in the previous inland wetlands commission reports. I live at 202F Wingate Circle, Monroe. I'm representing my father Edward, who lives at 257 Spring Hill Road. I have a number of questions. Mr. Rose mentioned that approximately 36,000 cubic yards of material would be removed. I'd like to know, how many dump truck loads is that? What's the standard dump truck load size? 11, 12, 13 cubic yards?
Well, go ahead with your questions, and then I'll have, then I'll see if we can get answers.
Okay, that's question one. How many linear feet is the buffer zone to the four Monroe residential properties at 266, 290, 298, and 302 Spring Hill Road? Next question. What is the blasting procedure? Can your commission enumerate on that? What exactly happens? Do you have to file something to the P&amp;Z commission, the fire department? What goes on with that? Please tell me.
The last question?
It's not the last question.
Give me all your questions.
Rock crushing is set to be going on between 10 a.m. and 3 p.m., Monday through Friday. How high is the noise level, and does that violate Monroe's noise ordinance? Can you please tell me that? Next question. There's going to be a lot of blasting done because there's a lot of rock there. How are homeowners reimbursed because of blasting activity that damages their foundations, septic tanks, and so on? Can you please tell me what that procedure is?
Is that it?
That's all the questions I have at the moment.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other members of the audience that have questions for the commission? Are there any members of the audience online that has questions? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, yes, you have, can we go back? Mr. David Laurent? You can unmute. Can we unmute? Still going?
Can you hear me?
All right, you can go ahead now, just your address, name and address, please.
Oh yes, my name is David Laurent, and my address is 14 Blueberry Lane, Monroe, Connecticut. And I'm a relatively new resident of Monroe, I've only been there for about five years. And, you know, I'm formerly of Stanford, and the same industrialization that's happening in Monroe now has happened in Stanford, and has pushed a lot of people out, and made it harder to live, for, you know, the prices have gone up for the properties. And so I want to just reflect that I agree with the two previous, the two previous, you know, question, you know, all the questions and all the grievances that were expressed earlier, I, I'm in total agreement, agreement, that, I don't have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Laurent. Are there any other participants online that would like to address the commission on this application? Seeing none, go back to the applicants, representatives, like to address any of the questions.
Yeah. Blasting procedures, blasting procedures are dictated by Fire Marshal's office, dictated by doing a pre-blast survey of any of the adjacent close properties, and if there is damage from blasting, it is paid by insurance. I mean, that's, that's the standard procedure.
The, your insurance, the.
Paid by the insurance, the insurance of the person doing the blasting, that's their insurance. That's the standard way that blasting is taken here. The buffer to the Spring Hill residential properties is 25, based on the excavation filling regulation, plus there are slopes that are beyond that 25 feet or that are controlled by the regulation. It's purely done by the regulation, that's, that's what conformed with James' review that. Noise ordinance, we have to stay within the noise ordinance, I don't know also what is going on, associated with the crushing operation is, I don't know. I can't profess no question of that. You know, even at 30, if you were to assume the 36,000 cubic yards being removed is all rock, it won't be all rock, because it's an overburden on, on this site, we know that. That would be somewhere in 2,000, 2,000 trucks, you know.
So you'd anticipated 2,000 truckloads going out on a realistic edge from your experience?
And my, my experience tells me that if it's crushed, a lot less trucks have to be the site.
And the differences?
The factor between rock and crushed rock, you know, could be 30, 30% or more, depending on what, what the rock is, size of the rock. And one other issue I'd just like to bring up, I know that the hours that we've talked about are 10 to 3. You're working a five hour day, you're not getting as much work done as you're working a seven or eight hour day, so the operation will take longer. You know, normal hours are 8 to 3, but I, I tried to point that out to the staff, but it has changed.
Normal working hours, they have.
What could I say about?
Normal hours to blast, normal hours to crush, and you have residents that are within so many feet of that.
I have no difficulty with that.
Well, I'm saying, it's like you can, you can work within a certain period of time, and I'm saying to you is, how is the blasting and crushing, and then what about notification to the property owners that are before a blast, if anything, that approval? It's a standard.
Standard.
Be familiar with that?
You know, they'll set up, usually set up specific times when it happens.
No, I mean, talking about notification for the owners.
Yeah, the other people notify, that it doesn't be a pre-blast survey.
Whoever wants to be notified will call them before a blast. I just have an issue with the crusher, because when it first came into us, you said, we're not going to use a crusher, we're not going to take that much, you don't think there was rock there, most of it was going to be fill, you're going to take out of there, and all of a sudden, we're going to bring a crusher, and we don't know how much rock we're going to have, and we don't know how much rock we're going to crush. We have no idea, because, you know, this. So, I don't know, as far as I'm concerned, is like I said, I have an issue with the crusher. And when it came into us, you weren't going to crush it. Bye afternoon. Okay, any other commissioners have any questions?
You mentioned the setback to the excavation. Philip, do you know what the setback for an actual building would be?
Buildings on your feet.
On your feet, okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear for people, because I think that's it.
Okay.
Oh, actually, sorry, the, there was another question, oh, the number of dump trucks you thought, or how much you thought about it.
Okay, sorry, all set. Okay. So, back to you, I'd like to do a first hearing, you said okay?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Something. Do you explain the pre-blast survey of the site for Derek? Is that the question we still have, is what would happen?
That they'll be, they'll be notified, there's certain blasting, there will be somebody who comes to their residence, goes over, they see where all the cracks are, that exists, takes photographs of it, so they know what, what exists, and that if there's a claim made of an issue, then people will investigate it.
Okay.
Is there city water on Spring Hill? City water?
Yeah, I believe there's a portion of it, yeah.
Maybe where the neighbors are. Know that?
It's right on Spring Hill for the neighbors.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we'll close this hearing, and move along on the agenda. Yes. I have another question.
Sorry?
City water questions.
Did you have another question? Yes.
Okay. I don't want to cut you off.
Reason why I'm concerned about the blasting, I don't have to give my name and stuff again, do I?
Derek, for the record, just.
Derek Talbott, 202F Wingate Circle, Monroe, representing my father Edward, who lives at 257 Spring Hill Road. One question I had on the blasting was, what type of material is being used for the blasting? Is it dynamite? Is it plastic explosives? Is it C4? What kind of, you know, cuss of effect?
That's not really within our per, that's the Fire Marshal, that determines what can be used.
So he dictates?
Yes.
What can be used? And what is normally approved?
I don't know.
Doesn't, yeah.
I don't know.
That doesn't come from.
Reason why I'm asking so many questions about that is that my father's residence is at the top left side of the picture, he's across the street from that at 257. Just to the left of that and down the road is Five Colors Farm Road. And before that big storage building was constructed, they were illegally blasting, and my father was pelted with a lot of rock material.
Oh, well, I can assure you, that's not going to happen, we have a very.
Well, my concern is on that.
Yes.
Another comment is, when 115 Technology Drive was constructed, if you see the little cul-de-sac, 115 is immediately to the left of that. They cut all the trees down in 1997, 1998, but then the building wasn't started to be constructed until 2003. So you're talking about five or six years where every day we're looking at a wound scan. I would think that the Planning and Zoning Commission would take things like that into account. If they don't have a tenant lined up, they shouldn't be allowed to do any of this until they do have a tenant lined up. I don't know what your rules are on that, but I'd like somebody to answer that question.
It's a separate hearing. That's a separate hearing.
And who does that, where does?
That'll be here also, once we get to that point, so we do, this is the first step, or actually the second step.
So you're saying it'll be another P&amp;Z meeting?
Yes.
Okay, not some other department?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, well, this hearing is now closed. Okay, that ends the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We have liberations and determinations, so we can actually continue with this application, deliberate on it now. We have a draft in front of us. Like this draft?
I wrote the draft, I, I actually made comments on it, however, I realized shortly after the meeting started that my corrections weren't on.
All right, you want to go over them, so we can make those changes?
So, so it's the draft excavation filling permit approval, it's actually EFP-2023-03, file number 113, 260 Spring Hill Road. The site plan's dated 6/15/23, I changed that to the most revised date of the plans, I can't recall off the top of my head what that date was. And then the second, whereas, the proposed excavation filling permit application submitted pursuant to the permit standards and requirements of zoning section 6.4 seeks to excavate approximately 46,546 cubic yards, not 64,196, and export 36,708, not 43,360, cubic yards of fill material for the purpose of resale. The property will be graded to support a future commercial development, and approximately 12,837, not 20,828, cubic yards will be used on site for grading purposes. I will also include in the conditions section, Article 4, for the noise section. um, for the noise section, for noise ordinance in industrial areas abutting residential zones. Um, and then it says, whereas commission noted the project requires waivers, that whole section's being struck out. Um, and then it goes down to, um, the next whereas, which there were no corrections there, as far as I know. Um, commission considered proposed application at duly notice public hearing, open and close on September 21st, 2023. Um, notice of public hearing is filed in Monroe Town Clerk's office and published in the Connecticut Post, not Voices. Um, public hearing notice was sent to abutting property owners within 100 feet of the subject property, as evidenced by submission of all certified mail receipt and subsequently returned green cards, which we do have. And that goes to the vote.
Okay. So, um, any discussion? So.
Can we adjust, so, are your blasting, crushing will be restricted? Hours of 10 to 3 only during Monday through Friday, can we decide excluding holidays in there, just to make it really clear?
A page, that was.
Page one.
Yep, that was one of the corrections I did make, but thank you for, yes, reminding me. Excluding holidays. Oh, actually, the next sentence, no activity shall occur on legal holidays declared by state Connecticut or federal government. Um, the last line, all other operations shall be restricted to the hours of 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then there was nothing right after that, so I.
Just end there?
I included that.
This was approved by inland weapons?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anything? And the other commissioners on this? Nope.
I have an issue with the question.
Right, got that. Alright, Cheryl entertained a motion to approve.
Omega motion to approve EFP 2023, file 03 dash, uh, number 113, sorry.
2023 dash O3, file 113.
Yes, O3, file 113, uh, with the additions mentioned.
Okay, as amended, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of all, starting on my left.
Uh, Lupo, yes.
O'Reilly, yes, Ambrosi, no.
Uh, Condon, yes.
Smaragino, yes.
Motion passes, uh, the draft excavation fill permit has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Two years. Okay, moving along. We have a new application that's not gonna be, uh, discussed tonight. Is another text amendment, um, can you brief us?
Uh, so it's just a regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations to allow a sorting and handling facility within the I2 zone. So that's like kind of failing or postal, is that what a sorting or handling, or is that materials? It's materials, I believe. Um, what would the difference between that and a recycling facility be, or like, uh? That's, that's the question, say.
We'll see, I don't, they come to us, remember this? Remember what it was?
I forget what you're.
Yeah, they came to, it's like, I don't know.
Oh, let's see.
Hmm.
No, it was yours, I got mine.
Moving on.
Uh, let me, let me look quick, so I wrote everything down, I don't, no, I don't remember this one.
10 minutes, we have none, pending journey matters, um, we have none corresponding, none commissioner reports. The commissioners have any reports?
Yeah.
Yes.
Move on, Josie Ring Road, for 97 Josie Ring Road.
Okay.
I need to find out, does he have a building permit there to do, to start work? You know that, does anybody know that?
Uh, I I know Cheryl mentioned it to me today.
I need to find out.
Is that the accessory structure?
That's the accessory structure.
Cheryl, me and Cheryl, we're gonna sit down about that tomorrow and, uh, go over the file.
Is it, or somebody called me in the papers, and told me that, uh, it doesn't look like anything that what we approved.
Okay.
By what they have, that the building's going up, so, alright, somebody needs to go over and take a look what's going on there.
Sure.
Or bring me a copy of what he has for approval.
Okay, yep.
They, we.
You have had to rein him in several times, you wanted much longer.
You wanted steps going upstairs, and now I see that there's, it looks like it's like, uh, what the person was telling me, it looks like it's like, uh, what's it, split branch or whatever, where it's got another floor that goes down.
Split level.
It's a split level. So I I I know what he got approved for.
Okay.
And in front of here, I just want to see those plans, I never saw the plan.
Sure.
Make sure it's still 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
We're gonna be scheduling a subcommittee meeting.
Yes, so, I know. I just looked.
Time is right here, it's coming up.
Sorry?
Time is here, it's coming up.
Okay.
I know, typically the subcommittee meetings are scheduled for the Mondays following a planning and zoning commission meeting. However, uh, Cheryl, the zoning enforcement officer, wouldn't be able to attend a meeting this Monday. So I was gonna bring up the question, wonder if every, if anyone was available on Tuesday at 5:30 for a subcommittee meeting.
What?
Uh, next Tuesday at 5:30, ra- rather than Monday.
September 26th. What time?
5:30.
Oh, I can't make that.
No.
Following Monday?
Is it?
Holiday?
Oh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, what, what?
This thing.
Mike can't make that thing. Uh, so let's see, so we can maybe. Alright, so, um, what about Monday, October 2nd?
That's okay with me. And, um, well, just, just me, you, nobody else is here.
Those guys that are here.
Time?
5:30.
5:30.
How long you think?
Less than an hour. Just, because I, we're just gonna go over, um, these regulations that were taken off the agenda, because outside council wanted opportunity to have some input on it.
Yeah.
Um, and then there were some other regulations we wanted to get up to date for state statutes.
Okay.
That's the second you said?
Yeah.
Second at 5:30 p.m. Well, welcome to your first meeting as Paul Fledge Plannett.
There.
Plan, it went very well.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not?
Huh?
Close it up.
Close it out.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Alright.
It's unanimous, we are now adjourned, it is 8 p.m.